Hello, everyone. Last couple of business days, there's been a lot of good activity. Two and a half million dollar cash offer that you guys received. And I'm just begging that our communities can work together. There's an interesting twist on this offer is that they don't want to retain the building. They're actually just retaining the beautiful front of the building, which is the historic street front that we all cherish. And build up a really nice complex on that site. Should get rid of all the fears of any kind of worry of another school moving in because there's going to be no school left. So two and a half million dollars is a wonderful number because we know that you have a little bit of a budget issue. And two and a half million dollars would help that. It would help our community heal and get back to normal. I just, I'm begging the community and the school board who are elected by us to reach out and work with us. I mean, that's what we want to do. That's all we want to do. And get back to normal life. Just don't understand why that developer got a rejection letter already today saying that billing is not for sale. No discussions. It's just an interesting thing because your bylaws specifically say that any kind of offer to vacant property or asset that's no longer needed needs to go in front of you guys. And it doesn't ever get there. So begging you guys to get that conversation going so this community can move on. That's what we all want to do. The lawsuit will be dropped. Everything will be moved on and things can be collaborative.
Susan. Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you tonight. I appreciate that. Prevention of bullying in schools is a top priority for most parents. Here are a couple quoted excerpts from the West Bloomfield Board of Education Bullying Policy, 5517.01. Protect students from bullying, aggressive behavior. Bullying or other aggressive behavior, including by V O E members, contractors, and volunteers is strictly prohibited. This includes written abuse. So that's language directly from the school board policy. This brings me to the flyer that was created by an anonymous person and sent to many homes to influence the upcoming election. It contained disturbing distortions and lies about candidate Kirsten Sanneville Douglas. And then it urged people to vote for her, Compton, Beatty, or more. This is a form of bullying. So far, not one of you or anyone on the board has come out publicly to denounce this misleading, harmful flyer. This makes you appear to be bullies. Even if you didn't have a direct hand in the flyer, silence is compliance. You are purporting to be role models for the students. Please help role model leadership on this. About the recent $2.5 million cash offer to purchase Roosevelt, as is to be repurposed into housing and mixed use. Accepting this offer could go such a long way towards offsetting the $2.8 million budget deficit, especially when you consider how much properly abating the building will cost. And you have demolition rebid after much public scrutiny to do it safely. Press release by asbestos expert attorney Eric Abramson, he states that asbestos testing of Roosevelt was insufficient and he has serious concerns about compliance with mandatory abatement procedures. As Mr. Abramson states, cutting corners to save on cost cannot take precedent over community safety. Accepting this offer would go a long way towards solving the Roosevelt problem collaboratively with a fiscal and environmental win for the entire community. I meant to, I'm going to just grab, I brought each of you a copy of Eric Abramson's press release. Thank you, David. I urge you to read it one more time. Maybe you've seen it before. He's not part of our group, by the way. He's not part of the Save Roosevelt group. He's just a conservative member of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you turn in your card?
I did not.
Did anyone else have a card that I didn't see or anything? No, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to shed some light on additional effects of this flyer. That people have attempted to implicate me and imply that I had some involvement in the creation of this flyer. Let me assure you, I did not. I don't know who did. What I do know is that it's unfair to me to indicate otherwise, especially when you never came and asked me. My daughter is sitting here with me because after all, she is my campaign manager and my biggest cheerleader, who loves her mommy. In my last campaign, we looked at the results together. She said, mommy, did you win? I said, no. Her immediate response was, mommy, you gotta do it again. She said that because she has a front row seat to the dedication, commitment, visions, and desires for what this district can and should be. I want to put a face on the person that you really are hurting in your implications. She was very upset when I discussed the matter with her and she couldn't understand why anyone would even try to make such a feeble attempt to imply her mother's involvement. So the next time anyone wants to implicate me, I want you to see her face. When you see me, I want you to see someone who is willing to advocate for all the students in this district. So to anyone making any implications, your actions are filled with hypocrisy and you should stop. The only conversations that should be occurring during the school board election is who is best suited to move this district forward and what we can do to offer our students the best education possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay. Moving on to number three on the agenda. Is there a state assessment data review? Mr. Scott Wong, Assistant Assistant Director of the State Board.
Good evening, everybody. Go Tigers! Big game going on right now. When we walk out, we're going to be celebrating.
What's the score?
Zero, zero in the A. Not that I'm watching. It's a tight one. We'll get this thing moving.
But no crushes?
No crushes. Thank you so much for having me this evening. I'm excited to be able to share some spring data from our state assessments, specifically in Language Arts. And before we really get into the data, I just want to talk about, you know, obviously, we know our strategic plan. We heard every board meeting. But one of the things I really want to dial in is the idea of education being a shared responsibility between our students, our staff, and our families. Because what I've noticed over the last three years is a true shared commitment and a sense of alignment and growing in the same direction that I have yet to witness in this school district. And I know it's just going to continue to get better and better. So on behalf of the families that support kids with their homework, our staff, who's rolling up their sleeves and really looking at data, and our administrators, who are really paying attention to what their priority objectives are, it's been, it's been a good ride. And it's only going to get better. We have some data goals across the district. One of the things I want to point out is that our goal is, when we think about what we're trying to accomplish, we're focused on us getting better. We're focused on how are we going to move our grade level cohorts in terms of their percent proficiency from one year to the next? And how are we going to improve our percent proficiency within a grade level from one year to the next? You won't see a goal on there that doesn't focus on how we can get better. We have some priority objectives that we develop every year, within each year of our strategic plan. We look at data. We take that very seriously. We look at trends in the data and we determine what do we really need to tackle this year. And I really want to pay attention to the academics and program side of things today because that's kind of where my focus is going to be. But you've heard the word proficiency scales over the last three years. Each year, we've taken a step forward. Last year, we really focused on getting those proficiency scales and those priority standards in a year to glance for all of our content areas. This year, we're moving forward to dialing it into unit planning and looking at how do we build units that start with assessments that align to our standards and learning experiences that align to our assessments. And when you can get down to that level of focus, you're really going to be able to see some movement. Tier one instruction is really important for us in terms of data-driven, high-quality personalized learning. We, as a department and as a district, have made a huge effort to make sure that we evaluate and leave no stone unturned when it comes to the resources that our teachers have so that they can support students. And you'll see later on in the presentation how we're doing that. Differentiation, it's tough in the world of education. We all know if you've been in the classroom teaching, it is hard. But we put a lot of effort in terms of looking at how do we use formative data, formative data, and summative data, not just these lagging indicators that we're going to look at today, to really make specific tailored decisions about the kids that are in front of us, not just the class, but individual students and groups of students. And then tier two and tier three instruction has been really important as well. When we, when students are starting to crack, what are the tier two and tier three interventions that we're going to use? And how do we get better with them? So I'm going to show you really quickly some district state assessment data as it relates to ELA, and then I'll show you some math data. And then we'll talk about what we've seen in the data and what we're doing about it. So one of the things that I'd like to point out, you're going to look at, this is the spring of '22 over here, all the way to the spring of '24. So we have three years of data here that we're looking at. One of the things that's interesting to us, that we're really excited about, is the fact that we are, in the majority of our grade levels, higher than the state average, which was not the case a couple of years ago. So that's really exciting for me. The other thing is, when you look across the state and the average percent of proficiency, the state averages, three of the grade levels actually dropped. Whereas if you look at West Bloomfield, we only had one grade level, within the grade level that dropped. So I'll give you a specific example of good improvement. You look, for example, at our eighth grade PSAT in the spring of '23. It was 63%. This last spring, it was 70%. So that's a great 7% jump. Another good example would be this 42% to 44%. The only grade level that we did not see an increase within the grade level was fourth grade. Whereas, as I mentioned earlier, across the state, three different grade levels from third through 11th grade, those state averages actually went down within that grade level. On top of that, we're seeing some good trends in our cohort data. I want to point your attention to sixth grade in the spring of '22. Coming out of COVID, still recovering from hyper learning. 28% of our kids are proficient. The next year, it increased to 31.4 and the year after that, 70%. So there's some really good jumps and gains. Our second graders in the spring of '22 started at 34% projected proficient because that's the N W E A. They don't take a state assessment, but we all know that the N W A correlates very strongly. The spring of '23, they jumped about 8% and they jumped another 2%. And the third graders in the spring of '22, you're going to see those same trends. So we're seeing market improvements over the course of time. And if we continue to chip away and continue to tap into the things that we talked about earlier with high-quality resources, we're going to see more acceleration. Again, this 39% jump in this eighth grade is just truly remarkable in terms of what we were able to do over the course of time. So great job. The 11th grade SAT, I want to point out too. Our mean score from spring of '23 to spring of '24 increased by 14 points, 8% higher than the state average. When we look at math, we see some very similar trends. When you look at our school district compared to the state averages, we're higher than the state at all grade levels. Last year, there might have been a grade level or two where we were higher than the state average. So that is really exciting. We're also outperforming the county in a couple of areas as well, which hasn't happened in multiple years. Six of our eight grade levels improving their proficiency from '23 to '24. So for example, you'll look over here, you'll see this 36% to 46% jump in fifth grade. You'll see a 26% to 32% jump. So there is progress being made. Our grade level cohorts, if you look over the course of time from the '22 to '24, made some improvements in some areas. That's an area of growth for us where we want to get better. I do want to point out, though, there is a difference between proficiency and growth. Proficiency is really important. We know that. But in order for students to become proficient, they have to meet their growth goals. When they meet their growth goals, we know that they're accelerating their progress and we're getting them one step closer to proficiency. So I want to show you, if you look at our N W E A growth scores from the spring of '24, one of the things that you'll notice is that within these grade levels, every single grade level's percentage of students that met their growth goal got higher than the spring of '23 or stayed the same. One in which were stayed the same at 74% there and a 57%, so two of those. But you see some jumps here from 55% to 69%, from 47% to 56%. So within those grade levels, our growth measures are really improving. The next thing I want to talk about are what we're doing, the things that we're doing and the steps that we're taking for continuous improvement. As I mentioned earlier, I believe that our systems are strong and they've got a strong growth over the course of time. And one of the reasons for that is we do look at these lagging indicators, but we look at them for what they are, which is simply a lagging indicator. It's a postmortem. It does nothing except say, hey, what do we need to do better? What did we learn from last year? From there, we start to identify some priority areas where you sell those priority objectives. But the real work really starts to happen when you start to plan and implement. So on an annual basis, we're planning and implementing. And one of the things that we've amped up is system accountability, whether it's a professional learning community and the goals that they set, or building leadership team, or even us at the central office level. Our goals are clear and transparent, but we've continued to get better in how we collaborate and align with those. So when we look at leading indicators, we're looking less at state assessment scores and more at formative assessment data, benchmark assessment data, learning environment observation data when we're collecting what we see happening in the classroom. We use all those metrics to really come up with some collaborative strategies to support our teachers and our students. So I believe in terms of data collection, you'll see a lot of school districts that'll look at one data point, whether it's state assessment scores or benchmark. We don't stop there. We look at stakeholder survey data, whether it's climate and culture survey data from parents and students. We also look at learning environment observation data where leadership teams are going in and scoring what they're seeing in the classroom on a regular basis, unannounced. So that's a pretty robust data system that helps support our system. Within the system, we take great pride in a great new teacher professional learning program. Every year, our teachers have a week before school starts, but it doesn't stop there. The mentoring program is a great system of support for them so that they feel connected and a sense of belonging. And then throughout the year, we just had last week, for example, a full day with our new teachers. Now that they have their feet underneath them and they know what it's like to be in the classroom, they can take a breath and say, okay, here are the adjustments that I need to make based on the learning that they get. Our professional learning, we're really being intentional and focused in terms of cadencing that learning, whether it's at the admin level with admin council. We're being intentional about how do we give our admin professional learning, on whether it's coaching teachers, giving feedback to staff members, or learning about safety systems. But one of the things when we talk about cadence is you don't want to hit them with 14 things at once. So we're very intentional in September, we're going to support teachers in admin in this. In October, we'll look at the culture side. November, we'll come back to the academics. Our district-wide M T S S system has continued to improve. Up to about three years ago, our handbook was a little skeleton and now it's very strong and robust, especially at the elementary level. Curriculum evaluation cycle is extremely intense. Our ELA team for the secondary has already met three times over the course of two weeks, all after school, and their next meeting is coming on November 5th. They're super happy because every time I plan it, it happens to be on the Tigers game. I don't know what I'm doing, but. Our teacher evaluation system aligns in terms of our instructional framework. What we want our teachers to do instructionally is how we're evaluating them. We take great pride in that. As I mentioned earlier, our proficiency scales, those are our priority standards that we can viably guarantee that we cover over the course of the year. Our goals that we have in the buildings that are strategic, shared, and transparent, and then engaging our families and connecting them. So one of the things you'll see on these next several slides is our priority objective and what it is, the main area. And then all the different things our department and our buildings are tackling. Our elementary literacy pilots, which I know you've heard about before, we're piloting two resources across all the buildings, letters. It's important to provide resources and give the right materials in teachers' hands, but they also have to have the skills and knowledge and different tools in their toolbox. We have over 75 staff enrolled in letters. We started enrolling staff members about two or three years ago. And letters is a two-year program that's intensive, labor-intensive, job embedded. You have to practice the skills that you learn within the classroom. And the best part is we utilize our instructional coaches. They go in and they give, they've all been letters trained, so they watch the teachers, they give them guidance on how to incorporate the strategies, and they hold them accountable and support them. I think when you look at Laker Learning, K-5C, Level of Math, Fifth Grade Band Orchestra, that really taps in that we have, we're developing things for everyone, whether it's a student that needs an extra boost in joy and reading through Laker Learning or a student that wants hands-on, project-based learning through our Project Lead the Way STEAM curriculum, or a student that traditionally hasn't had a chance to move up a grade level in math. Now, because we work K-5 and we have that ability to go up and down the chain, we have students now moving up from third grade math to fourth grade math, and fourth to fifth. Before it was, if you were fourth, fifth, sixth, you'd get advanced math. Now, we have first graders bumping up, which is really awesome. The secondary level, we're piloting a great new curriculum. If you remember the slides that we looked at earlier, when you get into that secondary level, specifically the seventh grade, sixth grade, some of those math scores seem to take a dip. They're below that 40% mark. We truly believe it's an impact of the resource that we have been using. Our teachers are really excited to pilot the reveal math. We feel like it allows us to differentiate better, gives them a lot of different resources. So we're excited about that. Secondary ELA, I told you about that earlier. We've been hard at work at looking at our achievement and really looking at instructional design, not just what resources are we going to select, but how are we going to deliver high-quality instruction? We've been looking at the General Education Leadership Network Essential Practices, which align with the K-3 Essential Practices for Literacy. And we're really focused on, hey, it's not, we're not just teaching a book. We're teaching kids how to grow as readers, how to have intentional discourse, how to engage in problem-based scenarios. So lots of exciting things come forth on the plate when it comes to tier one instruction. When it comes to our proficiency scales, I already touched on this a little bit earlier in the presentation, so I'm not going to hit on it too hard. I do want to say when we are looking at resources, we're looking at, are those resources the right match for our priority standards? Do they fit in terms of sequencing and scope? When it comes to differentiation, we've been really excited about our building principals and the way that they've stepped up. If you were to walk on campus on opening day from building to building, the one thing that you would see in terms of a common thread is data. Every principal leading data presentation, asking teachers to break that data apart and then naming and being very clear about what our goals are. That's really exciting to me. At the M T S S systems level, we have a really heavy focus on our secondary level. We feel like we have a good rhythm with elementary, and that's the case for most school districts. But many school districts stumble as M T S S is secondary. How do you make sure that you intervene early and what types of interventions can you provide? The fact that all of our PLCs do data analysis protocol three times a year and our building leadership engages in that same thing also helps us differentiate and meet students where they're at. One thing I'm also really excited when it comes to tier two and tier three, when you think about our reading interventionists across the district, every one of them has a passion and a pet project, if you will. And our goal this year is to actually get them aligned completely 100% in terms of what are the tools that you have at your disposal? How are you collecting data? What is the data that you're collecting? So we can really measure the efficacy of our interventionists. That's really important to us. We don't want a bunch of Billy the Kids out there slinging whatever. So we're excited about that and we're really excited about the data collection that we're going to do with that. That along with our Language Arts teacher assistants, which are not reading interventionists, they're a paraprofessional position, that are pushing into classrooms and supporting those mid-level students so that our teachers that are in the classroom, that are the experts, the ones that are getting letters trained, can do the intervention with those students that are struggling. Right in the classroom has been awesome. And then I X L has been a true gift for Language Arts and Math. It meets students at every level. It's a resource. It's a digital platform. It's not going to do all the teaching, but it does help immensely in real time in the classroom, respond to students' needs. So I have, hope I didn't talk too fast. What questions might you have?
Scott, I'm trying to think as I was listening to like the master notes. We did, we started Bridges before COVID. Was it a couple of years before COVID? You might not remember.
We've been at Bridges, this is year five, six, year six.
Year six.
Yep.
And I know we talked about it really takes three years to do a new curriculum. We're doing all the secondary math. When do you think, I know it's going to take three years to really, for teachers to be secure and really secure in the new math. Where do you think is going to happen, like in the next year or two? What do you see?
I think, you know, like anything when you're learning and developing something new, you might, you might see a dip before it gets better. That happens often, right? I think it's our job to make sure that they're trained extremely well and have the support that they need. But I also, I know that our mark is three years. What does it look like in three years from now with that secondary math? What types of gains are we going to see? And we'll really see a true measure. It won't just be a small jump, like you're seeing. You're seeing a lot of small jumps over the course of time. I think you're going to see larger leaps from year to year because of the resource and the way that teachers are going to be trained. But it'll take some time.
Well, first off, I think this is all really good news. I know that a continuous process of improvement, which is what I'm calling what you've been doing, takes a lot of work, has to be very proactive. You can't let up on it. The teachers have to be heavily involved, constantly providing feedback and helping direct how to move forward. But the results of our will be great. And of course, we might continue with that. We want this district to be the best in Oakland County for sure and far beyond that if possible. So thank you very much for all the work you're doing and please continue.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So I don't have the data in Word docs yet. This is the first time I've seen it.
Yep.
A lot of these numbers, I will be honest, leave me very concerned. I would like time to study it and then the opportunity to follow up afterwards, after I've had a chance to really look at one of my, the things I'd like to look at. I mean, look at the data. I want to see the cohorts. Okay? Because what the grade did to me isn't as important as what that group of kids did from year as they're growing. But I also want to see, is there real correlation between these growth scores and the proficiency? Are we seeing it? Or are we seeing this monumental growth, but we're really not moving that needle on proficiency? So those are some of the things I'd like to look at. So I'm hoping that we'll have that data uploaded to Word docs and then I'll have to follow up later. Because again, I haven't seen it. This is the first we've seen.
So I will always say, you do a great job presenting. So it has something to do with love your voice on that.
Face for radio, Ms. Evans.
What is it? So that's always good. It's always good to hear it. But again, the results are concerning to me because as I see the 38% proficient, I look at the inverse, that means 60% are not proficient. So that's, in some cases, in reviewing the data, that means the majority of the children who are being tested are not proficient in reading, writing, and arithmetic. So I'm going to sound Michael Rucker again. That's concerning to me. So as indicated by my fellow board member here, I haven't seen the data to really know. Again, in diving and doing the, you know, my data within the school, but I want to hear it from our own staff to see how do we tackle, you know, this concern? Because again, getting that proficiency in every one of our students who graduate out of our school system, no matter if you're on your way to college or be on the way to a career, everyone tested to see if you read. So we have to continue to get our, you know, our students ready for the big world and that starts along the way. So I'll have additional questions as you load the information in, but that's what's concerning to me.
You have any other questions as well? Yeah, I'm sure everybody is taking a deeper dive just.
Yeah, I'm sure everybody else took a deeper dive just in process. I do like how you color-coded the cohorts, thank you for that.
You're welcome. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for that. Okay, item number four on our agenda is our, and by the way, thank everybody that's meeting on that work. We have, we have tremendous amount of people that are all growing in the same direction. We've moved that things a lot. We've been trying to do it for years, haven't we?
Pretty amazing, some good people.
Are you from Ohio?
Item number four on our agenda is our.
Good evening, is it item four, game nine, score's got it? Score three zip, game over.
Game over. Yeah, we won.
We won?
Top of the night, we top of the night.
No, I can, I can leave then, thank you. No, this is, uh.
He just said game's over.
Hey, this, this is something that's really important. As you know, our transition program, uh, the construction is, uh, getting close to being done. We're actually scheduled to have that space done in December, uh, so now it's time to furnish the space. So Jennifer Mado and Carrie Sini from TMP, the two interior designers, have been working with our team and Dwan Williams and her staff at Transitions for months to come up with this bid package, uh, for furniture. Um, essentially, a couple of things I just wanted you to think about. One is we have a lease agreement with J and S out to twenty-thirty. So by vacating this lease, it's gonna save us five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, uh, from now until twenty-thirty, just something to consider. The other thing I want you to think about is in our twenty-twenty-three bond, the Treasury app, we have a million dollars for furnishings at the high school. So that's something else I want you to consider. That's where the money would, would come from for this project. And then the last thing I want you to think about is that these students are in there from age eighteen to age twenty-six. They're in there for eight years, almost a decade of their life. So it's very important that we furnish these spaces well. Um, so three of our design criteria is obviously our ADA accessibility. We wanted cleanability and we wanted durability. So that was really our target when we met with staff and sat down and built these spaces. Um, right now, I'm gonna show you this, uh, Jennifer actually wanted to be here tonight to present this, but she is out of town and couldn't make it. So I'm gonna do my best. But she essentially took the map of the building and has color-coded it. So you can see down in the lower right, which is on the west side of the, of site project, um, is the simulated apartment, um, in that teal color. Then you move your way up into our instructional kitchen. Then up here, we've got the dream crafts in green. Then you've got Dwan's office up here in blue, the waiting room. You've got a small conference room up here. You've got the social worker and, uh, speech path is in this office here, another conference room, and then the kitchen, or teacher's lounge area. Then moving over into the light purple is the classroom. Up here is our sensory room and then we have our Paze lab. What's not shown on this and it's at the very end of the document, we also do have a large conference room at the top that's off the map here that will be shared by the Transition and the, uh, High School Special Ed Department. And that's a, that's a very large conference room that's being constructed right now. Um, as, as we go through, I'm not gonna go through each and every piece of furniture you can peruse through this at your leisure, but essentially they've identified each and every piece. And like I said, it was, these pieces were picked for durability, cleanability, and ADA compatibility. Um, and we wanted the space to be very nice for these students. Um, if we look at the overall cost, um, Jennifer's done a great job of summarizing it using, um, you know, cooperative purchasing contracts with all of the contractors except for Stance Healthcare, they do not offer that. Um, so the total for this space is a hundred and sixty-two thousand and change, uh, for all of that furniture. And I will show you here on the, the very end, our last page is that large conference room, uh, that is right next to the brand new laundry room that we just created.
You want to have any questions?
Yeah, we said that we're gonna save the money of getting out of J and S lease. The question is, we have an out with our penalty release.
Correct, yes, we do. We've already given them a notice that we're vacating the lease. It's a six-month, uh, notification in the contracts, we've already met, exceeded that. So right now, we're just gonna vacate the area that is the transition, so that's five thousand, six hundred and fifty-two square feet. Adult ed, we're working on a plan, but all of our buildings are full right now, so we have a, a plan to get them out of there in the next couple of years and that's a, a little over three thousand square feet. So the, uh, the lease identifies the annual cost. So as an example, in twenty-five, twenty-six, Transitions is a little over a hundred and four thousand and the Adult Ed is forty-two thousand.
So the five hundred and thirty thousand dollars you mentioned on savings, that's over eight years?
Uh, that's over five years. So that's from twenty-twenty-five through twenty-thirty. And now those are specified in our lease, so we have an annual increase in annual amount that's specified in the lease.
Just a quick, getting back to the furniture. It looks beautiful. I, I'm just, I'm looking at these tables and it does not appear, and maybe it's just because of the images, that they would adjust. Because I guess my question is this, can they adjust in height to accommodate a wheelchair?
Yes.
Because we do have some kids periodically that have wheelchairs.
And, and the other thing is like, if we look like, just as an example, let's get up to the learning kitchen area. You know, we have some booths over here in the corner, but also these tables, they have some chairs that have armrests cause kids might need that to, to bound and to be able to push up. But we also have some students who are too wired, can't, can't use, uh, you know, can't fit in the chair with their walkers or whatever. So we have chairs that do not have armrests and they did that purposefully. But also these chairs are rated at five hundred pounds, cause we have some larger students and stuff, so they wanted to try and get, you know, to accommodate all those students.
Have you considered getting some bariatric chairs that have the extra bits for the wider students that may need that?
We've looked at that and we're going to, we'll supplement that in here.
Okay, because, and, and we wanna make sure everybody can sit comfortably. You know, especially those that, that need assistive devices to, for their ambulation. We need to make sure that they, they're comfortable and that they're safe.
Right.
And if they're locking over the side of, of a chair, that is not a safe situation. And, and, you know, is this what the staff, is the staff happy with this?
Yes, like I said, all, all the meetings were with Dwan and her staff and she actually brought the teachers in, so they were involved in all of the meetings.
Cause they're the ones that have to use this stuff, you know? I don't, I don't care if it, as long as it meets their needs, but I would encourage you to look at some bariatric chairs.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a quick, it's just a curiosity question, actually. Um, we have, you're building out three conference rooms? Is there a, a need for three separate conference rooms? I don't know, maybe there is, but I'm just asking.
Well, it, it's not just conference, they have like a de-escalation room where sometimes they'll just bring a student in who has too much sensory overload, so they need a separate space. So they do use a lot of these smaller spaces, uh, to interact with the students that may need that. It's not just conference room. For, it's more, more for the students than it is for the adults.
Can I ask a bit more closer? So the new conference room is being built, is that up in that, what used to be the closet that we were looking at? That's now gonna become a conference room?
So a third of that was built into a laundry room, which is already done.
Okay.
And then the other two-thirds is gonna be that conference room that you see here.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah, so we're reutilizing that space and we made, we made storage space elsewhere that, you know.
Okay, so the laundry would be to the left of, of.
Yes, the laundry room, yep. In fact, that's the washer you can see off screen.
Perfect, okay, good.
Mm-hmm, so we're repurposing a space that otherwise was just wasted full of junk.
Oh yeah, it was, it was ridiculous.
And it's right in the heart of what, where they needed.
Yeah, absolutely. And then one, um, I, I'm seeing it on here, I just wanna make sure. So there are doors in the hallways to be able to close off the transition center?
Yes, so that becomes its own space, there, those doors are in there now.
They're fire doors too, aren't they?
Uh, they're not fire doors, they're more of just a barrier, but they are, they're fire doors in that you can egress out of them cause they're bi-folding like that, you can see the bi-parting doors for fire escape. But they basically close off, there's a set right here and then there's a new set right up here. So the transitions is almost its own separate pod from the high school.
And that, they will remain closed?
Yes, they are.
There is not that sensory overload?
And the students have already learned, I mean, we, um, I talked to their construction superintendent, they haven't had any high schoolers go through those doors.
Good. Did you get up there good?
Good.
Okay, anybody else? Nice work. All right, what are you gonna do, this, I'm putting on spot. Are you gonna do, are we gonna cut in in December, January, or are you gonna do it like before school starts in the fall?
I, I would rather do it in January after the, well, probably maybe February after the furniture's in. Um, so the plan is, we've talked to the Transition staff about this. We didn't wanna open it up, um, in December and then bring them over right away. We wanna give them time to acclimate, make to the space, so we're gonna have some field trips over to this new space, get them comfortable with it, get them used to it, and then we'll start up there permanently in the fall.
So I, is it going to be better? Of course.
Of course you do.
I have a question. Well, you know, so I mean, we may have already discussed this, when we talk about safety for this space, for these students, and I know that we, you know, don't actively discuss, you know, safety issues, but there are safety glasses and precautions that we will.
One of the, one of the things that we actually did, um, for this particular program is we do have a secure vestibule up here. But what's different about it is we've actually put in monitor stations in every single room, cause those staff are so busy sometimes, we don't have someone that maybe can, if you've ever been over at Transitions, there's not always someone there to get through the door. So whoever's visiting that space is confined in that secure vestibule until a staff actually comes up and greets them. Um, we do have that monitoring in every single room so that any staff that becomes free then go, uh, address first and then something. And they do also have the ability to, if they know who it is, if it's a staff member that maybe doesn't have their card on it, they can buzz them into the space from any one of those rooms, but they'll have to know who it is.
I have one more question, I'm sorry. It just reminded me, the high school sensory room, is that already moved and, and they're setting it in there?
Yeah, that's already in operation.
And it's all good.
Yep.
Okay.
And then the other thing, like you, we have a swing here and stuff, so they put instructional's forward that.
I just wanted to make sure that the high school, because we kicked them out of that space.
Yes, they were over here.
They're a part of the room.
They're, they're in it all the time.
And it's nice, we're even gonna get this Paze lab in between, so they have the sensory on either side of it and they can both access it. High school and, uh, Transitions.
I like that the, the high school kids have access to the Paze lab too.
And we did actually, uh, cut across the hallway and put water in that room and they have all their, everything they need now.
Sweet, okay, nice job.
Any here, any? Exciting. Item number five is our temporary, oh no, here's someone else.
No, I'm, I'm.
Here's one thing. Item number five is our temporary.
Three teams?
Call the commission review, Mr. Eric Witten, that pretty soon.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This, so tonight, this is an informational item for you. Um, as you know, we employ a controller in our business office, I would call that the number-two position. Uh, it's a very, very important role. We have an employee that will be on a leave of absence soon. And, um, as you probably know, we contract that position from Oakland Schools as part of our IGA with Oakland Schools. Oakland Schools is not able to provide us a coverage during that leave of absence, it'll be about twelve weeks. So we have secured someone to place in that role. We think it is very, very important, um, in terms of keeping our financial services moving forward and on point that we have somebody in that role, twelve weeks is, is too long of a time for us to leave that empty. We do not have the capacity to really dole out those jobs to other employees. So I'm bringing you, uh, for review this evening, um, the resume and the temporary ad-will contract for that temporary employee. And I will, um, with the board's support, bring that back on the twenty-first for your approval.
Any other questions?
Well, I mean, I think this is important to do. You cannot go twelve weeks without your controller. And I think that the contract is reasonable and I think that the person that you selected, oh, nice job. I get to her because, um, those of you that don't know what happened, is it performer district and what she uncovered? She's good.
We are very confident that she will be.
Not, we don't want anyone missing from a team like we.
Especially, yeah, this is not a week off.
This is twelve weeks, so this has gotta be done, no choice. So.
You know, in regards to the contract, the ISD Oakland Schools, was there some supplemental? Did they kinda help us out with that, um, contract employee that we had from them?
I'm, in what?
In what way, meaning that they were?
It's their employee.
They're employee, but this, this one we have to pay.
We will.
Right, but what, what to, it's a good question.
Yes.
We, we don't have to pay for the twelve weeks of leave. So Oakland Schools will not charge us during that period that the employees off. So basically, we're gonna take that money that we're saving to pay for the temporary position. So they, they were, they were wonderful partners in, in arranging that for us because they could've, you know, they, they would've had to provide services. So they could've said, we're gonna send you this person one day a week, this next person one day a week. It would've been, it would've been more choppy, whereas now we have a consistent.
No, that's great. I, I see where that the wash occurred, so Oakland Schools, uh, so that's.
Sorry, I.
I figured that.
That's a very good question.
It's a good question.
Phil, okay, great, thank you, Eric. On the issue, with item number six, is our Omni four oh three B adoption, agree?
Yes, also an informational item this evening and that I will hope to bring back to you on the twenty-first, um, is an amendment to our contract with Omni. Omni is the service provider that, um, administers our employee plans, uh, for TSAs, four oh three Bs, four fifty-sevens. Um, we would like to amend that to include another type of plan that we can make available to our employees. There's been some demand for it, um, and that is the Roth four oh three B. Now, I, I did find out that I misnamed it in the, uh, my information that I gave you, so I will fix that for the twenty-first. It is not Roth IRA, it is a Roth four oh three Bs, we do not deal in four oh one B's. So I hope that that is clear. Everything else about the Omni contract is virtually the same, except you will see on the first page, number nine, it says, we are amending it to add this plan. What it, it's completely voluntary for our employees, but just provides them another investment opportunity for their, um, retirement, which we think is a great thing to do for our employees. And any of the vendors that we currently work with, if they offer this product in their line of products, they will now be able to enroll our employees in it, so we're excited about that.
Good thing.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a very good thing.
So I know we always have the catches up on, um, coaching our staff and all these things that are levels, um, for tax shelters and retirement and all that. Um, how's that coming?
To a certain extent, um, you know, we do not provide financial benefits.
No, we don't provide that, but.
However, we do encourage them to be, you know, we do encourage them to be saving for retirement and the, you know, it's, uh, as a parent, I will just tell you, it's a very interesting conversation. When I started at twenty-five, I wasn't really thinking about retirement, right? And so it really did take somebody saying to me, you need to think about this and these are the kinds of things that you do. So I really can appreciate that, having lived it myself when I, you know, when I was in that situation, and I think it's really important. So we wanna make sure that we share those resources, that comes through our benefits office. Um, I know the WBEA works with them a lot, they bring someone in to speak to our new teachers as part of the new teacher orientation. So I think all of that knowledge is really good.
We're gonna just keep these in, I guess.
So now that you're through, you realize it better.
Well, we, right, exactly. I have wise up on that.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you for being this, for our employees. Agenda item number seven is our budget to actual, Nancy wasn't, they have to leave.
I'll, I'll be covering that for Nancy today. Do my best. Can you zoom in on it a little bit? Trying to see it to zoom. I have it in front of me. It's in Word docs, but. We're, we're, we're on a roll with the budget, budget to actual. Our, our goal is to present this at the study session. This budget to actual is actually not very exciting. There's only really two variances that need explanation. The first one is, is, as it relates to local revenue. And that reason why you see the large fluctuation is because property taxes each year are collected at various kind of big fluctuations. So it's when, it's when the money comes in, goes out, but it's consistent. We know the amount and, uh, it just, each, from year to year, fluctuates. The second variance that you see is in business services and this is due to the IGA for tech services are usually, not usually, but last year was paid, uh, in the first quarter and, um, I'm sorry, this year was paid in the first quarter and last year it was paid in the second quarter. So you see the increased spending and less percent of the budget, uh, remaining. In terms of the percent remaining this school year, we have eighty-six point one seven percent of our budget remaining. This year, this time last year, we were at about eighty-five point five three percent, a variance of about point six four percent. What it tells us is we're, we're in line with our spending, so we have a good check and balance to take over that each month.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Okay, so if we point to the original budget, the seventy-eight, that is seventy-eight for an entire year?
The, yeah, the revenue that we expect, but will change, yeah.
And the actual revenue that you have is for, if the eleven million is for what year?
I'm, where, where are you referring to eleven million? The actual revenue. Oh, that's, that's, I'm sorry, that's the actual revenue that we've been, we've collected. So every month you receive a state aid, no? Which includes the amount of money that you received each month, that's how much we've collected in revenue thus far.
Right, and so how many months does that represent?
Um, July, August, September, three months.
Okay, so that's a quarter, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if we look at that and think about, and this is, this is kind of, can we say that in this, and that way we don't have to guess as one thing? It's a quarter, but for what period of time does this actual revenue and expense represent? And then if we look at, if we're spending according to how we spent last year, then we may be at the same number we were at last year. So are we looking now for a goal to spend less than last year, so we then won't run into a deficit position, so?
Yeah, so the thing is, when we present a budget in June, it's literally on paper, we, we don't have the state. So, I mean, I can confidently tell you that for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, when we go over the audit, we're, we're going over that next week with Plant Moran, and we'll present it to the board at the November meeting. The actual budget for twenty-three, twenty-four is gonna come into the positive, which means we did not deficit spend at all last year. We're not in a deficit. It's really, the difficulty is, for example, this year we started saying it's a projected operating deficit for twenty-three. That's, again, that's a conservative number, it's based on not knowing the state funding for certain, we actually just, we found out about it after we approved the budget. So really, when you look at a June budget that you're approving for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, it's, it's an educated hypothesis. It's, I don't wanna say it's a guess, but it's an educated guess in terms of the information you have at the time. So.
And student count.
And student count, so that's why a lot of the state revenue hasn't come in, because we just hit county, right? Ninety percent of our funding is based on fall count, ninety percent of our budget is based on fall count. So the ten percent is from the spring count. So even though last year there was a lot of discussion of a deficit, we actually ended the year with a surplus. We don't know that until the audited number. Now, we'll continue, we will continue to get closer to the truth, you know, in terms of starting off. But, for example, the legislature just, they just approved additional, thank you for the pressure, the, the political pressure that came, for an additional four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for mental health supports in West Bloomfield. That's a number we didn't, we didn't have at the start of the school year. So, you know, amendment one that happens January, February timeframe, it's gonna look different in, so those adjustments are made throughout the year. Whereas, like, in June of twenty twenty-three, we started with some assumptions, we made adjustments throughout the year, and then we got to a surplus as opposed to a deficit. And, and the board was a part of that, we, we made some difficult decisions. We really stuck to that attrition model, when people left, how can we maximize those positions? And I think that's why we're, we were all able to be successful together. That's, that's the, the part of budgeting. Now, I am happy that Nancy's here, and when she came in in February, she helped us immensely. And we're gonna continue to work with her and, uh, I'm sure her second year with us is gonna be a lot easier than her first year. So, you know, that's, that's kind of where we're at today. We have to see where count is, that will update the numbers, and then we'll, you know, we'll go from there when we present an amendment to the board in January of the year.
Any more questions? Um, I'm breathing a little bit, I believe, that's.
Uh, yeah, I know Nancy, well, because she's not here, I, I, because she likes to wait till the audit is closed. But, you know, this is where we think we're at, based on the information we have. But, uh, don't tell on me.
Thanks for that. So agenda item number, I don't know, eight is our Oakland County School Board Association bylaw amendment, and Carol's going to present this later.
So in your packet, it is a proposal, um, every year, the OCSBA Resolutions and Bylaws Committee looks at our resolutions as well as our legislative priority, and they make recommendations for new resolutions. We didn't have any this year, that'll come next year. Um, we do have a little bit of a bylaws problem, and so there is a proposal to change the bylaws. So the, this is triggered because of me, I'm the, I'm the cause. Um, so when it does come before us for a vote, I will declare the conflict of interest, and the board will have to decide if I can vote or not, because I have an ethical conflict of interest on this. It is my term on the OCSBA board that if this does not pass, it will end. And they're very concerned, because I'm the treasurer, and I'm the one that plans all the meetings. So all they're asking is, is that, um, because I will no longer be on a local board, that there will be two of us on the Oakland Schools board, myself and Mark Katz. Can we amend the bylaws so that we could both fulfill the rest of our term on the OCSBA board, which is a year and a half? It's, we were both elected at the same time, this would allow us to both serve until June of twenty twenty-six. That's all that this does. We won't both be able to run for reelection at that time, but we're hoping that with the new crop of, of trustees that are being elected, and, and we'll be able to get people to fill. And I will tell you, there are not people knocking our door down to come and serve and do this, okay? It's another unpaid job, and, and it's a poor. Right now, we are living along with only eight of our nine positions filled. So, um, if I leave on December thirty-first, it's gonna leave them in big trouble. And so that was why they said, well, we would like to propose this to the members to see if the members would be willing to have us both serve. The other person is Mark Katz, who is the JRC chair. So, you know, we've gotta, we've gotta figure out a way out of this, but, um, that's why this is coming to you. And, um, like I said, I, I, I'm happy to stay from the vote when it comes, unless you guys decide that, unless you guys decide that I, it's not a conflict for me to do it. So if you have any questions about the proposal, that's in a nutshell, what it is, and that's for that.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Okay, this will come to the, what, one unit, yeah?
What?
That will be the full board meeting and.
Yeah.
That's just a discussion, I agree. Okay, good for the order.
Good idea, I don't want, yeah. And it's actually, there's gonna turn out to be a follow-up of a couple, a couple of, of public comments. So as the election season heats up, we're constantly bombarded with political ads. While school board elections are nonpartisan, some of our neighboring districts show a clear partisan divide on issues, and some of those races have become downright nasty. Until now, I've always been very proud to say that we behave better. Late last week, several voters received an anonymous postcard personally attacking one of the candidates seeking to serve on this board. The postcard names four West Bloomfield school board candidates, encouraging voters to vote for any three of them at the expense of the fifth candidate's personal reputation. The postcard was the second cowardly anonymous personal attack mailing this election cycle. It's bullying, it's wrong, and it's not acceptable. The postcard does not identify, I'll pass this around. It, this postcard does not identify the name and address of the person that paid for it, a clear violation of Michigan Campaign Finance Act, Michigan compiled law one six nine point two four, which is punishable by a one thousand dollar fine, ninety-three days in jail, or both. I wouldn't hesitate to stand up for any of the five candidates if they were the ones being targeted and bullied. It takes courage to put yourself out there to run for any elected office. Anyone seeking to serve on a school board must demonstrate high ethical standards through their words and actions. The school board sets the tone for the entire district. Trustees and candidates must model positive behavior for our students, our staff, and our entire community. I ask everyone here tonight to join me in condemning these cowardly, anonymous, illegal personal attack mailings. If you sent it, sanctioned it, contributed to it, or if you know who is responsible, I urge you to put a stop to it. If you have something to say to or about the candidate, speak directly to them. Follow the law, stick to the issues, run a clean, positive campaign based on your own merit, but don't do this. Our community deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I did block out, so, I, this should never see the light of day, no. The garbage that was in this should never see the light of day, but I want you to see what was out there and how it violates the law.
That's why I, I, I don't wanna give it any more amplification than it's gotten. Like, I saw it on Facebook.
Today's a great day to condemn it, this is a perfect time during good for the order to condemn this. Whoever did it, condemn it, because it is illegal.
Whoever did this, I'm not, I did do it.
No, but I'm saying, I condemn, condemn this, condemn this.
No, this is not that she came, if she, uh, has no, I know. And I'm just, I really am just really disgusted with the world.
This is disgusting.
That's really sad.
I, I will go wrong, I will tell you, the first one attacked the same candidate, it also attacked me. That's the one.
That's the second one?
This is, that, that, that was a letter that happened, what, a couple months ago, and it attacked me. I'm not running for anything, but they felt the need to do this. So this is not okay.
No, it's not, it has no place in democracy.
No, it doesn't, so I, I ask all of you to join me in condemning this behavior.
I just don't wanna give it any more air, I don't wanna, you know what I'm saying? I don't wanna make a big public, because then people who haven't seen things like this will wanna go and find out what we're talking about. That's my concern. I totally agree with you, I do condemn it, it has no place in democracy, it has no place in, especially not a school board, right?
I don't know, I.
But I don't wanna give it any more airtime than, and you're like, for me, that's, yeah, but I have. No, we've never had this.
We've, I've never seen this before, not in this district.
No.
Everybody, you know, we've seen it elsewhere, not here. This is disgusting, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm appalled, I really am.
Yeah, and I agree, I think we all have work in terms of doing what's best for kids, supporting our kids inside and outside of the classroom. We have people who are running who have children in this district, and no one should be subjected to that. We're not on a pro agreement. Sorry, we might have differences, but at the end of the day, you know, I, I hope we'll just continue to focus on doing what's best for kids, making sure we're doing everything for them to be successful. Um, I think, like most of you, I just, I can't wait for November to come and.
Please, number six, right?
So I'm having the board, we're sorry that you, yeah, have retired.
I just wanted to say, too, Stacey and I say something all the time, and I'm not gonna say what we say all the time to each other, I'm not gonna say it.
What?
Oh. I'm not, I'm not, this is our personal thing, but what it stems back to is, um, everyone deserves respect, and at the end of the day.
Well, we're humans.
I think this is on, and Jerry, it was.
These are your neighbors.
I know.
These are your neighbors, you don't do this, this is not okay. So thank you for allowing me to, to get on my soapbox.
I think it needed to be said.